We are here in commission chambers for the September 8th, 2021 Ormond Beach City Commission meeting. I hope you felt welcomed tonight by our Finance Director Kelly McGuire and our Assistant Finance Director Chris Bile. They served as our greeters this evening, our award-winning Finance Department. They do an amazing job for us. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you, to my right, your left, our Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart. Actually, down in front this evening, because we're a little bit socially distanced, is Acting City Clerk Wendy Hans. If anybody wants to speak on any item tonight, make sure you get your cards to her. Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone 1. Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone 2. To my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone.
Joining us on Zoom, I believe, tonight is Commissioner Littleton from Zone 4.
Hello, everyone.
And there's generally a thing that I read, I've read it so many times now, it's probably emblazoned in your minds, but essentially, the rules allow for any Commissioner who requests, for health reasons, to appear electronically. I think we've all used that at different times during this pandemic time, and Commissioner Littleton is using that tonight. Also with us down in front is City Manager Joyce Shanahan, our Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. Up on the dais with us is City Attorney Randy Hayes, and for those of you listening online, our Mayor Bill Partington. If you would, at this time, please silence your cellphones and make sure they're truly silenced, and I will ask Pastor or Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health to give the invocation. If you would, please rise, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God of hope and love, through your mercy and protection, we have made it to this new month of September. Thank you for watching over each of us and our city of Ormond Beach. Tonight, we also lift up to you, our mayor, our city leaders, and thank you for watching over them and giving them wisdom and guidance in handling the business and concerns of our city and its people. Bless this meeting tonight and guide the decisions that will be made. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, I'm excited for our city to announce our two new school principals. We have Mr. Joshua Jackson from Pathways Elementary School and Mr. Earl Johnson from Seabreeze High School. Gentlemen, if you would come up and just face the audience for a moment so they can see you. We're going to get a picture with you guys with the commission behind you, and if there's any comments that you'd like to make, I'll give you that opportunity, but first, I want our Deputy Mayor to say a few words, and then we'll allow you gentlemen to make a couple of comments. Welcome to the city of Ormond Beach. We're excited to have you here. Two great schools in our city and some exciting new leadership. Deputy Mayor Persis.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to officially welcome Dr. Earl Johnson and Mr. Joshua Jackson to Volusia County. This is Mr. Johnson's first time in Volusia County. He's kind of gone around, but he's been basically one of the most wonderful principals in Volusia County and Eppen Flagler, and has a fabulous reputation of leading schools. And I've known Dr. Johnson and his wife for close to 30 years. It's been a long time, and they have two wonderful children that have gone through Volusia County schools, and they just, you know, are a family that just really emulates our community, and both the kids are successful, both parents are successful, and I know that Dr. Johnson is going to make Seabreeze even more successful than it is. It is a fabulous school, and I happen to go there, so of course, I'm very partial to Seabreeze. Sandcrabs go crabs. But again, we're just so happy that you're here with us, and earlier this summer, we had a big party at the Grind for Dr. Johnson, coming back to Volusia County. It was really a fun event, so I just want to officially thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything I know that you are doing and will do for Seabreeze. So, thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Yay. And Joshua Jackson, he is just the greatest guy. I heard so many great things about Mr. Jackson from Dr. Fritz, our superintendent, and when he was appointed, my husband Carl, we immediately called him and took him out for lunch, because we wanted to get to meet the principal of Pathways, especially since our grandson started kindergarten there. I want to know this guy, and we just had the best time. He is just the most wonderful, caring, knowledgeable person I could imagine that could, you know, take over Pathways. He's already, you know, pinpointed everything that needs to be done there, and he's already made some major changes, and it's just going to be a wonderful year. We're so happy that you decided to leave your home state of Kentucky and come here to us, and I hope you say a few words, because I love, we all want to hear your accent. It's just fabulous. And I do want to say, my grandson loves Pathways and he loves his principal, so right there, you have a kindergarten student that says, "I love my principal." You have done your job, so thank you, both of you, for being in Ormond Beach with us. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to let, some applause there. Let me let Commissioner Kent also make some remarks as our other professional educator on the board, and Wendy, will you get the handheld for Dr. Johnson and Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I wasn't expecting to talk, but I'll be happy to. Not much more I can say, that Deputy Mayor Persis has already said, but I too went to Seabreeze High School, Dr. Johnson, and my son Wyatt is there in the 10th grade. And you had, at the very end of the year last year, you were on campus and you walked into some classrooms, and my kid came home and said, "Dad, I met our new principal. We are all so excited to have him at Seabreeze, and I know that kids are going to listen to him when he tells them what they need to do." And from a father's viewpoint, I loved that. And I'll repeat, Deputy Mayor Persis, the claw rules, go sandcrabs. And to Mr. Jackson, you know, I spent 14 years of my life working at Pathways Elementary out there in Building 9, teaching 5th grade, and now my wife teaches out in Building 9, and our children went to Pathways, our children went to Seabreeze High School, and you already know this, but you are at an amazing school, and I get firsthand knowledge of the great things you're doing there. Welcome to Florida, really welcome to Ormond Beach, and Dr. Johnson, thanks for coming back.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor Partington, Deputy Mayor Persis, Commissioners, Commissioners. I am just excited to be back in Volusia County. Seabreeze is just not another job. I started at Seabreeze in 1978 as a student, and if it were not for the teachers and coaches and administrators at Seabreeze High School, I don't know where I would be today. And I had the opportunity, once I went to college at the University of South Carolina and did some other things after college that messed up my head, but we're not going to talk about that right now, but I came back to Volusia County as a teacher at Seabreeze High School, and I had no intentions on staying in education. I thought I was going to go to Seabreeze, coach track, coach football, and go to college on a collegiate level to coach football, and I had that opportunity. But the impact that I had on students at Seabreeze High School as a teacher and a coach, I could not leave public education. And I had a plethora of experience in education. This is my 33rd year. I've been in administration, I was Assistant Principal for nine years, and I was a principal for 13 years and worked on a district level for four years. And when I received a phone call, I'm just saying, I'm just putting it out there, from this guy and some people, from Mr. Persis, that Seabreeze High School was coming available, and are you interested? And I know this is not a school setting, but my response to him was, "Hell, yes." Seabreeze High School was my dream job forever, and I'm here at Seabreeze High School at a dream job, and I am going to pay it forward, because I'm going to ensure every student will learn, and I will reach every student, one student at a time. And right now, it's a little bit difficult, because everyone's not drinking the Kool-Aid. However, I will assure you that I will reach every student, one student at a time. And so, thank you for the city of Ormond for welcoming me. I've been around for a long time, I grew up here, but thank you for embracing me over the last few months that I've been back. So, I'm excited about being here, and if any of you need to reach out to me, please do so. I'm excited, and thank you.
Well, good evening. Nice to meet you all. I already know some of you, I remember you, Mr. Kent. I've met you, and I enjoy working with your wife. She's a phenomenal teacher, phenomenal. And so, my name is Joshua Jackson. I come to you from Kentucky, the civilized part of Kentucky, northern Kentucky, next to Cincinnati. I've been in education for 21 years. It's my 16th year as a principal. I was in the classroom for five years, and I'm a little bit different, but my wife and I, we always came down here, and about three years ago, my wife looked at me and she says, "Josh," she says, "I would really love to be able to live in Volusia County." And I looked at her and said, "Do you understand that I got X amount of years in retirement?" But the more we came down and the more we visited, and especially hit me over winter break this past year, we took about six days and we were at New Smyrna. And I remember New Smyrna, because New Smyrna was the beach that, I grew up in poverty, to be honest with you, and my grandma and grandpa would always try to take their grandkids on a vacation, and New Smyrna Beach was the vacation destination every year. So, we went to New Smyrna, but that was a little bit more of just a vacation. We were checking out the area. We were researching. At that point, I had my certification already in progress, just waiting for it to come back. So, I told my wife, I said, "Honey, if I get a position," I said, "it's going to be an act of God." That's exactly what I told her, because I know how hard it is for out-of-state candidates to go right into leadership. Well, school ended on June 3rd. My teachers are closing up, and I get a phone call from Dr. Clayton. I see Deland Florida on my phone, and I went, "That's Volusia." So, I talked to Dr. Clayton. She talked to me for about 15 minutes, said, "I'll be talking to you tomorrow." And I, "Yeah, whatever." I was like, you know, that morning, 8:00 in the morning, I remember, my phone rang again. This time, it's Dr. Fritz's secretary. And next thing I know, that day, our lives were turned for the positive, because I've never left the home state of Kentucky, never have. I'm 45, never have left. But I will tell you this right now, Ormond Beach is a phenomenal area, and my family and I, we couldn't find a place here, so we're all the way up in Lake Mary right now, and I'm driving close to 80 miles a day. But I will tell you what, those 80 miles a day are well worth it, because we have phenomenal families, we have phenomenal kids, and we have phenomenal teachers. And I will tell you this, my whole mindset has always been collaborative teamwork. We have to work together, and we have to keep the kids a focus, and that's what we're doing at Pathways. See, at Pathways, it's already got a great start. We just have to tweak some things. And my focus and our goal is, as a team, is make our teachers better, grow them every day, make our students better, and that's what we're doing. And I want to make Pathways a school where nobody wants to leave that school. Once you're there, you're there and you love it. We want to make Pathways, it already is, but we want to make Pathways a warm, welcoming place for everyone. I can't wait until one day, we're able to welcome families back into the gates of Pathways Elementary School. I'm looking forward to that. But I really thank Mr. Persis. I watched the board meeting from Kentucky when I was appointed, but I want to thank Mr. Persis. Actually, Mrs. Persis, she is my mentor right now, and I couldn't ask for a better mentor. And it's actually pretty cool, because we just discuss what's going on, and she lets me in on the community and those things. But I want to say thank you. I want to let you know, my daughter goes to Seabreeze High School. She goes there. My son, he plays for 12U, Pop Warner Sandcrabs. They're 2-0. Go Sandcrabs! So, I can tell you right now, you've got a good group of boys coming your way for football down the road. But I want to thank you so much. Thank you for being warm and welcoming, and I look forward to serving this community. And the one question's been, students ask me, "Are you going to be here more than a year?" My answer to that is, well, the school I came from, I was there nine years. And once I say yes to a position, I'm there for loyal, and I'm there to do it, and I'm there to serve the community, our kids and our families. So, thank you.
If you gentlemen, both would come up, we're going to have you stand here, face the audience. The whole point of this is so our community can get to know you, welcome you, and know that you're here. If you have any interest in talking to Dr. Johnson, ask him about the New Orleans Saints, ask him about the Denver Broncos, some interesting stories there, and, you know, Principal Jackson, if you have questions for him. There's a certain trail in Kentucky for adults. Maybe ask him about that trail. He can tell you a little bit about it. All right, now we'll get a picture.
I should go.
One, two, three.
All right, 4A, please read the title.
Resolution number 2021-136, a resolution establishing the final millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, directing certification, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-136, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the proposed millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget is 3.9128 mils. This rate is 4.7% above the rollback rate of 3.7370 mils. The tentative debt service millage rates are 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. This is a public hearing, and we do have one card. It is Joe Hanush.
Joe Hanush, 87 Kirkpatrick Way. Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to make this real quick. You know, I read Fisher Selby's article in The Observer, and that's basically spot-on. I'm not going to take all the spoilers out of there, but the bottom line was that we have the money in reserves already to go to rollback on this, so I just want to say I don't support raising taxes at this time on citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to adopt tentative operating millage rate of 3-point, sorry, this is so formalistic, but millage rate of 3.9128 mils and the debt service millage rates of 0.0290 and 0.0890.
I move approval of resolution number 2021-136.
Second. Moved and seconded, tentative operating millage of 3.9128 mils is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the tentative debt service millage rates of 0.0290 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0890 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. The operating millage rate is set at 3.9128 mils, which is 4.7% above the rollback millage rate of 3.7370 mils. 4B.
Ordinance number 2021-31, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the 2021 to 2022 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-31, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. I just need a motion and a second for approval. Move approval.
Second.
Please call the vote to adopt the budget of $101,724.466.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and do I hear any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed, and we will move on to presentations and proclamations. And Chief, if you would come up, this is the proclamation for our Florida law enforcement officers that I'd like to present to you. I'll read it, and then we'll get a picture with you holding that. Whereas the Florida Police Chiefs Association and the Florida Sheriff's Association are designating the month of September to honor the service and sacrifice of Florida law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2021. Sadly, this includes the growing number of those who have succumbed to COVID-19 while protecting our communities. Both associations continue to raise awareness of the ongoing threat to law enforcement from COVID-19, and whereas law enforcement officers understand their oath of service means sacrifice, over the past 18 months, that's meant willingly exposing themselves to COVID-19 in the line of duty and potentially exposing their families when they return home. Whereas the Florida Police Chief Association's President and Daytona Beach Shore's Public Safety Department Director Stephen Dombinski released a statement, quote, "So far this year, 21 officers gave all and made the ultimate sacrifice with their lives, including 14 who died from COVID-19, which is more than last year at this time. Now, to honor and remember their fallen colleagues, the Florida Police Chiefs Association calls on all law enforcement to wear mourning bands the entire month of September and publicly salute the service of all fallen law enforcement officers in the state of Florida," unquote. And whereas the city of Ormond Beach is extremely grateful to all law enforcement officers for their service and sacrifice to keep Florida communities, including Ormond Beach, safe and secure, the city's police department is standing in solidarity with their fellow officers in wearing the mourning bands for the month of September. Now, therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as a time to honor Florida law enforcement officers in the city of Ormond Beach and encourage citizens to join with me in supporting all law enforcement officers and thanking them for their service to our community. Thank you, Chief. And we start with Connie Colby.
Good evening, Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. This is in regard to Hand Avenue Extension in Avalon Park. It's time for the voices of residents of Ormond Beach to be included in this discussion. The proposed extension of Hand Avenue has zero benefits to east side residents and only benefits Avalon Park. It's designed to cripple traffic on Granada Boulevard at its most congested areas, Williams and Tenova. Hand Avenue does not go through to the river and is residential past Nova Road. At an April 20th, '21 meeting, Mr. Selby requested a workshop. Mr. Partington stated it needed to be done at the right time to engage citizens. The citizens have been concerned about this for years. And Shanahan stated that they needed to wait for an HDR site video to be completed, which was approved last April, and for a complete TIA. The TIA was submitted to Daytona on July 12, 2021. I don't know if the video is complete yet or not. And on May 20th of May 2020, there was approved transportation study to be completed in 60 days. Are any of these available? Meetings should be interactive, and people should be listened to as well as given information. For years, this project has been suggested by the county, FDOT, River to Sea, and now developers and commissioners, despite a 2018 Ormond Beach application for a study to rivers to sea. According to them, the project is still not on their long-term planning list. Because of its huge impact on Ormond Beach, there should be ongoing meetings through inter-local agreements, looking for alternatives to direct Avalon traffic towards Daytona rather than through Ormond, and requiring at least one direct road from Granada to LPGA to be completed before they do any residential building. Hand Avenue is a county road. Many changes to it should be addressed through the county, as it affects Ormond Beach. At this time, I'm only seeing one entrance to Avalon Park, and that's on Granada, and wondering if this should be a place they're going to be trucks into as well for construction. There's an urgent need for another bridge across the river between Granada and Seabreeze in the vicinity of LPGA. I know the cost would be huge, but it certainly would help this area. Also, I wanted to ask about a project called Woods of Ormond Beach, where there's property 7,000 acres of it for sale on Granada past Avalon Park. I'm wondering if the city might consider annexing that property so we don't have another Avalon Park.
Thank you, Connie. Next is Julia Truella.
Julia Truella, 307 John Anderson, and I'm here in my capacity as Executive Director of Ormond Main Street to remind you all and invite you to join us this weekend in Rockefeller Gardens in Fortunato Park for, drumroll please, the Ormond Beach Celtic Festival. Finally back, delayed from April 2020 till now. So, we have a great festival planned, and I am ordering the weather gods to make things both cooler and drier by Saturday. So, I look forward to seeing you all there. We will be doing a September 11 memorial moment at the festival with the Bagpipe Band, so I hope that you can join us for that particularly. It's right at 12:25. Commissioner Selby will be speaking, but we will have all our great bands and food and Highland Games, so come and join us, please.
Awesome. Thank you. And...
And we move to approval of minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, posted to the city's website. Any additions, corrections, deletions?
Mayor, yes. On the minutes of August 17th, I need to make a correction. I, at our last meeting, I inaccurately stated that I had voted for the acquisition of the property on Old Kings Road, 385 Old Kings. I did not. That was a mistake on my part. I, and actually I went back and pulled the minutes from our meeting. That was in 2019. And I, the minutes read, Commissioner Selby had concerns with the price, environmental cleaning of items on the property, title insurance, and the time allotted to remove personal property. He supported the overall purchase but could not support the current terms of the contract. And the vote was four to one, with me being the only dissenting vote. So I'd like to see that change made to the minutes from our last meeting on August 17th.
Perfect. And I thought I had remembered you had some support for the overall purchase, and I went back too and looked at the minutes. In the February 19, 2019 minutes of the workshop that you weren't able to attend, but you had the city attorney read some notes, I guess, into the record, and you were generally supportive of the purchase price, but then as you indicated, you had those conditions. You wanted the, I guess, the property owner to do the cleanup rather than the city, if I recall, if I recall correctly.
That's correct, Mayor. That's, that is how it's done in commercial real estate. Buyers basically never buy land that's contaminated. They hold off on the closing until such time as the seller cleans the property. And, you know, what's unfortunate is we got a $65,000 credit from the seller because that's what was drafted in the contract. But subsequent to that, we got, subsequent to the time that we entered into the contract, we got a quote from our engineers that said the cost to clean up would be $120,000. And more recently, we have a quote that says the cost will be $175,000. So we're paying $220,000 for a piece of land that when we bought it at 220, should have been cleaned, it's now going to cost us, estimated, at least $175,000. And frankly, that's, I just, that's why I didn't support it then and I still don't support that now.
Well, you, you supported the purchase and that's good. Who's going to end up paying for that, I guess, is, is yet to be seen. I don't know what the Brownfield grant status is. Also, DEP has grants available for those kind of things, so who will pay for it? We don't know yet. There's an RFP out for it and ultimately we'll find that out. But I would ask the city attorney just to, as far as the legality of the purpose, purchase, and the public purpose of the purchase, if he could just give us a little bit of documentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. The Duncan property, as it's commonly referred to by the city staff, has a rich history. And this purchase closes a long chapter of acquiring lands around the five central lake areas for Central Park. And the relationship between the city and Mr. Duncan has been contentious, as you well know. When the parcel became available for sale, the city acquired two appraisals, which it was required to do. The condition of the property was evaluated at the time. The city engineer and consultants evaluated the condition of the property, and they did not want Mr. Duncan to be responsible for removal of the contamination. That's just not something that was within his physical capability, his financial resources. And as the party that may have contributed to the contamination, he's not the one that you want cleaning it up anyway. That's typically something that's always done by government agencies. We're better suited, we have the professionals to do that. I appreciate Mr. Selby's comments, but under his proposal, Mr. Duncan would be paying the city money to acquire his land. Now think about that. You can put three residential properties on this site. You can do the math, $300,000 times three, that's close to a million dollars. So that would have been a deal killer. As far as the legality goes, there was some litigation between Mr. Duncan and his brother that put a delay on the closing. That was concluded earlier this year. The title company gave us authorization to close. We did that. They issued a title policy. We have clean title. Mr. Duncan, the $65,000 was escrowed to ensure the removal by Mr. Duncan of his personal property. And in the event that that personal property was not removed, the city would retain that. He didn't remove it, we retained it. So the final ultimate purchase price by the city was $220,000, not $285,000. So that's the history. The purchase was, you know, it was done appropriately, in accordance with the city's codes. It was an appropriate exercise of legislative authority of this commission. And if it wasn't, the title company wouldn't have authorized us to, to do the closing. So the short answer to your question is, yes, it's, it's a completely lawful, legitimate purchase, and it is now part of the city's Central Park system, and the dual purpose is for floodwater, stormwater purposes as well.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Randy, I just wanted the record to be perfectly clear. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property. I can't wait till we do get it cleaned up and our residents can enjoy it as an addition to Central Park. I've had a number of emails from folks who didn't care about the cost. They wanted it cleaned up properly and they know that it's an important addition for the city to have that, not only for leisure service activities, but for floodwater control and, and other things that are legitimate public purposes. So I just thought it was important that we make the record completely accurate, and so I appreciate Commissioner Selby giving us the opportunity to do that. And if there's no other discussion.
Mayor, I, I just for the record, I never questioned the legality of the city commission buying this property. I never questioned that. I questioned the structure of the deal and who's, who ultimately is going to pay for it. And to you, just Mr. Hayes, government is not the best agency to clean property. The private sector is, and there are several companies, and no seller would actually do the work himself. He would hire a private company to do that. Now whether or not the Dunkins had the ability to do that, then the deal could have been structured differently. But at the end of the day, it, look, it's my opinion, I'm entitled to it, I'm a commercial real estate broker, I've been doing it for over 30 years, and sellers, buyers do not buy dirty property. And that's what we did. We bought dirty property. And now the taxpayers are going to pay to clean it up. Hopefully, we can get money from somebody else from the Brownfield Fund or whatever. That's still taxpayer money. That's my opinion.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it's yet to be seen if the taxpayers of Ormond Beach will use taxpayer money from Ormond Beach for this. But from your son-to-commissioner, who's a lifelong resident, whose mother and five siblings all attended Seabreeze High School, we have spent, this commission, over the past 18, 19 years, Mayor, millions of dollars in Central Park, the Environmental Discovery Center. This piece of land was the missing link that we had been waiting for. So I'll publicly say, even if we, the city, have to spend $175,000, $185,000 for the cleanup, I would vote for it again because it's that important for you. It's that important for Little Everett, who came to a city commission meeting and his sixth birthday is tomorrow, because that young guy will hopefully decide to live here and let his family enjoy what we have in that area. And City Attorney Hayes, I appreciate what you said about, you know, we could put three homes on it and all that, but it's not always about the money. It's about what's doing right by your community and for your community. And that is why, Mayor and Commission, why I would today vote to spend the new monies we've heard about to get that property cleaned, because it's, it's that important for our community, and quite frankly, Zone Four. I mean, there are walking trails, there are bike riding trails, there are playgrounds, there are fishing tournaments that happen there. It is a vibrant, wholesome, healthy place to be, and we need to make sure it's healthy. And that's why I do believe we need to make sure we have the right people in there cleaning it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis.
And I just wanted to add to Commissioner Kent's statements that that floodplain there is really, you know, can, it really, it serves a great purpose in case we have some catastrophic storm, we're going to need that area. So safety for our community, safety for the residents that live in that area. And so I too would vote for it again. I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And so with all that, just need a motion to approve the minutes from the city commission meeting of August 4, 2021, and August 17, 2021, with those notations.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll show those passing unanimously. All right. The following item is a community redevelopment item. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review this item and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask our secretary to read the title of resolution number 2021-137.
Resolution number 2021-137, a resolution of the city commission, individually and acting as the community redevelopment agency for the Central Business District and adjacent areas, authorizing the execution of an annual service agreement for Ormond Beach Main Street between the city, agency, and Ormond Beach Main Street, Inc., for the promotion of economic, physical, and aesthetic redevelopment and maintenance of the Ormond Beach Main Street district, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-137, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards. This is 8A.
I move approval of resolution number 2021-137.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll show that recommendation passing the CRA unanimously. I'll close the public hearings and reconvene the city commission meeting and we'll move to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item E and item J.
Motion to approve the consent agenda item, absent items E and J.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9E.
Resolution number 2021-141, a resolution accepting a proposal from AM Wyble Construction, Inc., to provide construction management services regarding McDonald House Restoration North Elevation Project, authorizing the execution of a work authorization thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-141, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on E. Is there a motion?
I move approval of resolution number 2021-142.
1, I think it is.
2021-142, I apologize.
141.
141.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions in the, first of all, I wanted to thank the staff for saving money. You know, the parts that have been done so far have come in under budget. Looks like over $70,000, $70,534 less than was anticipated. And for those of you in the audience, that includes the exterior renovations of the east, south, and west sides of the McDonald House. What remains is the north, the north side or the side that faces Granada. So, and what, my questions are pretty simple. The Historical Society put $100,000 into this project. Do you recall how much the ECHO grant was?
The ECHO grant was for up to $400,000. It was, it was a one-for-one, it was a one-for-one match. So a portion of that was related to our work we had previously done, as well as the land value. So the most that we can get out of them will be $400,000. By lowering it, we're not entitled to pull $400,000 if we only spend $400,000.
So, well, I got, I have 519, 519,000.
Okay, sorry.
Is that, I mean, I, maybe I've, maybe my total is wrong.
I apologize.
So is it fair to say that?
Yes, 519, so we would be roughly $260,000 out of that.
Right, okay. So the city's portion of the remainder of the 419, because it was $100,000 from the Historical Society, will be less than half of the 419,000, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's great. It's fantastic, great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9J.
9J is the city manager's status report for September 2021.
All right. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, so I just pulled this because there's in your report, and I, I didn't know whether or not you were going to address this in comments or not, Ms. Shanahan, but there's a fairly long list of proposed workshops, and I didn't want to not have a discussion about, you know, that list of proposed workshops. So if you're going to, if you're going to cover all of that in your regular comments, we can just.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
I'm fine either way. If you want to hit that now to save you a little time at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Okay. So based on prior discussions from the commission, we have been working on the HDR with them on their study. That is coming, we hope to bring that before you on October 19. That's titled West Ormond Transportation. The first workshop is Florida Department of Transportation for A1A and Nova Road. We've been working with them, I don't know, 18 months or more on A1A and longer on, on Nova Road. We had a meeting late last Friday with FDOT, and so they will be here for a 5:30 workshop if you're so inclined to have that. Additionally, we have three meetings set up for the OB Life Kickoff 2021, which is essentially talking about transportation issues in West Ormond, utilities areas and quality of life in West Ormond, is what we're calling that. And then we'll wrap that up. So it's much like we did last time, we'll have a series of presenters to the public. We'll give the public opportunity to ask questions. We'll do the fish bowls where they can ask questions and we'll follow up. And then we will wrap that up and bring the comments back to you all in early January. Senate Bill 64, we've been talking about that, about how do we move forward with a zero discharge requirement to the river in 2035. Sean's firming up that date with Meat Hunt is who our consultant is on that, so we hope to bring that to you. Casson Park, we have three different, uh, site concepts, three different concepts for you to take a look at, and then once we get your feedback, we'll take it to the residents to get their feedback. And then we have collective bargaining starting in January, February, March next year, so we want to have a shade meeting with you to talk about those issues. And then you have your master plan update. So any of those workshops you aren't interested in having or you want more information, we'll certainly provide that as we get closer to the date, but we just wanted to plot those out. Commissioner Selby asked for some of those to be brought back, and so we brought you a full schedule of that.
Great. Thank you. Any commissioner wish to comment on any other consent agenda items?
Just a follow-up question.
Commissioner Selby, sure.
Yeah, so the, the OB Life Series, October 26, OB. Yeah. So, the, the OB Life Series, October 26th, OB Life Kickoff and Transportation Issues, and then, November 9th, OB Life Utilities and Quality of Life, and then, December 14th, OB Life Wrap-Up, 2021 Wrap-Up. Are these, this is, are these all in response to Avalon Park and the impact that it's going to have on Ormond Beach? Okay. Well, I ju, I mean, I just, I want, that's what I thought it was, but I just wanted to make sure because I don't see Avalon Park in there at all, or, you know, it may not be appropriate to, you know, to single out a particular development.
I think there's broader issues in some of that area as well. Um, so, we didn't want to single that out. I mean, that's essentially what we're focusing on, is the transportation issues and the utility issues, and how that impacts the whole of Ormond's quality of life, not just West Ormond. Because we all know that that traffic has one way to go to the beach, and that's Granada. Um, Ms. Colby spoke tonight about Hand Avenue. We all know that that's going to be a very expensive road to build. Again, those are in county roads. They don't, the city has little jurisdiction in that area, but we want to make sure our residents are informed about that, so they can talk to the appropriate agencies that are making decisions on that.
Right. And when do you anticipate presenting to us? I know you hired a, this, we hired a consultant on the water, utility wholesale rates, water and sewer. When, when do you anticipate we'll get that report? You mentioned HDR for the October 19th.
He is tied up right now with a, another project that he was working on, so he has not yet wrapped up our project. So, I don't know at this point in time. As soon as that is available, we will bring that back to you.
Okay. Um, all right. And the, um, the SB 64, you know, the zero, the state is mandating that we come up with a plan, what, before the end of this year, right, to get to within 10 years, zero gallons of discharge into the, uh, intercoastal waterway into the Halifax River?
That's correct. And as I understand from, uh, Mr. Finley, it's not a very detailed plan. You just have to have some action steps, uh, to show you're moving forward, and we'll talk about all of that at that meeting.
And just for the record, just so in case you all might not realize it, but we pump over a half a billion gallons, 536 million gallons of reclaimed water into the Halifax River last year, in the last 12 months. We average 1.47 million gallons a day year-round. That's our average, 365 days a year. So, it's a big problem. It's a huge problem. Uh, Port Orange pumps zero gallons into the river. They don't pump one gallon of reclaimed water into the river. So, I'm glad we're working on it, and, you know, have more than...
Just for the record, we're permitted to, uh, pump 4 million gallons a day to the river. This is a huge change in, um, the legislation, and we're happy for that. Um, as you know, we've been working on, um, elevated storage, and that's what we've used in the past. Uh, Port Orange, uh, long ago, purchased land west of Port Orange and, and, uh, had some foresight in, uh, doing a long transmission main to push that water out west. Uh, there are lots of different alternatives that we can use, and we're looking at all of those. We believe that, um, this is a good time for us to look at those alternatives, because the governor's, um, agenda is all about water quality. Um, and we are hopeful that, um, with, um, uh, Mr. Leek's help, that we can get some, um, funding from the state on that. Um, there will be, uh, some folks in, um, priority positions in the state legislature that hopefully will, uh, get us a leg up in funding. So, you'll talk about your legislative agenda later on in the meeting. And so, um, yes, we, there are some times, like last year, we pumped nothing to the river for six months, because we had a dry period. And it all depends on the time of year, but we all agree that that's a priority that needs to be fixed. And we're going to work on that.
Another point on that is, uh, that's highly treated water that's going into the Halifax River, and very clean, coming out of our plant. Um, and 536 million, sounds like a lot, but to put it in perspective, when a city of our size gets an inch of rain, uh, it's about 643 million gallons of stormwater that run off into our rivers, lakes, ponds, streams. So, you know, it sounds like a big number, but when you calculate the actual number of gallons that you get with an inch of rain, uh, multiple times a year, there's a lot of water going into our rivers, lakes, and streams, and all of that is untreated. Whereas, what comes out of our plant is treated to a very high level. So, I think it's important to make that point. Um, now, did any Commissioner want to comment on any of the agenda items?
I did.
Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yes. I just want to say, I'm so thrilled to see the McDonald House looking so beautiful. Um, I'm excited to see the North Elevation exterior completed. Um, and that area will, it would include the front porch, the front porch roof, and the handicap ramp right in front. So, it's really, really looking great. It's something I think we all should be proud of in Ormond Beach. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? I actually, I had one. Uh, Commissioner Kent, did you have one?
You know, I, it's just, uh, the one I was going to mention, one of the ones you mentioned, Mayor, was our city, yet again, making sure that our residents are taken care of, and we are preparing for that storm. Is that what you were going to say?
It was.
I, I don't want to take your thunder, Mayor.
No, you're doing...
I, I was just going to say, you know, we have four firms secured, so that when we need to spend over $6 million, like we did a few years back, to get all of the debris that is on your property out of here, we are able to do that. And if, if, you know, it's funny how memories get short, but, you know, you drive around our streets and everything's beautiful. But, when that hurricane brushed by us, and we were one of the only communities that had debris removal, because other communities didn't work with companies that followed their end of the bargain. And there were communities that sat for months with that debris sitting there. And then, when you get high winds with debris sitting there, that creates another whole problem. So, I, I just wanted the residents to know, we're working hard to make sure, and to prepare for things that haven't even happened, so that when they do happen, you don't have to worry about it, and it, it's not a, a big, a big blow.
Awesome. Yep, 9G was the one I wanted to hit on, and thank Kevin Gray, working with Sean Finley under Joyce's direction. It's amazing what you do to protect our residents. These firms are happy to sign up with us, because they know we have the reserves to pay when the bill comes due. Then, we have to wait years to get reimbursed the millions of dollars that it costs to, to do these cleanups. But, our residents, in a way, have been spoiled, but they almost expect this to happen like a reflex whenever a storm hits. So, you know, with Tropical Storm Mindy, I don't think we're going to have very much cleanup or damage, hopefully, and, uh, hope the Panhandle doesn't either. But, uh, in years where, you know, look at the Panhandle with Michael, I think it was, in 2018, just devastated them. I'm still not sure that they've recovered from that. Um, having those reserves in place, we were just talking about the budget tonight, and having those reserves available for things exactly like this is so important. So, that's, that's why I wanted to hit on it. And Commissioner, thank you for, for bringing that up. Deputy Mayor Persis?
And I just want to add on to that. Um, you know, look what just happened in New York and New Jersey with the flooding, and they're still having problems. And, you know, if something like that happened here, we have to have reserves. We have to have that money so we can help our citizens and keep them safe. Just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move...
Mayor, we need a motion and a second and a vote, just to officially accept the status report?
Oh, okay.
I'll move, uh, Item J, I, Item 9J.
Second.
Voice vote, okay? Or you want to, you want to call the roll?
I'll call.
Okay.
You're good.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and thank you, Wendy. I don't know why in my mind I didn't think we needed a vote on that, but thank you for keeping...
Just as official acceptance.
Thank you for keeping me straight. Yep, we'll move to, uh, 10A, and I will open the public hearings. Please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2021-32. An ordinance amending Section 2-50, accessory uses of Article 3, General Regulations of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the Land Development Code of the City of Ormond Beach, by amending the conditions for temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes by nonprofit entities prohibiting temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes within the north US Highway 1 municipal service area and joint planning area, prohibiting temporary or itinerant car washes and motorcycle washes throughout the city during recognized special events, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance Number 2021-32, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. And I'll ask our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. Stephen Spraker, Planning Director with the city. This is a land development code, uh, regarding outdoor activities, specifically car and motorcycle, uh, washes. There are two types of outdoor activities. There's, first is the accessory uses, which are temporary, which staff can approve. Um, and then, there are the ones that are through public hearings, um, such as outdoor music or permanent outdoor storage. So, we're talking about the accessory uses that staff can approve. Um, as we brought for this item, there was concerns regarding how, uh, bike washes and car washes operate, regarding the duration of the motorcycle washes, the location, workers advertising, and the right-of-way distractions to motorists, and traffic safety. At the July 20th meeting, there was a series of options that were presented to the City Commission. Um, there are four options ranging from do nothing and continue on with the special event permitting for car washes and bike washes. Limit the duration was a second option. Prohibit the car and motorcycle washes during recognized special events. And then, the planning board had an option to allow the car and bike washes during recognized special events in 10 times through the years. The City Commission directed staff to go with Option 3, to prohibit the car and bike washes during the recognized special events. The ordinance that you have before you tonight, um, does, does three primary things. It prohibits the car and bike washes during the recognized special events at Option 3. It maintains the prohibition of the motorcycle and car washes in the north US on municipal service area and joint planning area, and then allows no more than 12 events in a calendar year that are outside those recognized special events and not in the US on corridor. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, and we're available if there are any questions.
Thank you. And I do have one card. Stephen, if you would, just be available for questions once we start discussing it. Joe Hanush.
Joe Hanush, 87, Terre Haute, Quay. Good evening again. I was reading the backup material on this, and I, I know it did come before the, the commission before. And from what I could tell, and I could be correct if I'm wrong, but it would, uh, basically ban bikini bu, uh, bike washes on A1A, and, I mean, because of, you know, distracted drivers. And, you know, if you were distracted driving, seeing a bikini pi, uh, bike wash on A1A, you probably shouldn't be driving an A1A. Uh, was, that's part of Ormond Beach. We're right there on the beach, and it's to be expected, frankly, uh, seeing, you know, that sight on, uh, A1A. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. I just need a motion and a second.
I'll move, uh, Ordinance 2021-32.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one quick one.
Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, that, to me, you know, that comment from Mr. Hanush just shows me how polar opposite we are on the spectrums with that, because the residents I speak to don't expect that. They don't want to see that in Ormond. That's not Ormond Beach, and they don't want that in their community. And that's why I'm going to vote for it tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Uh, Commissioner Littleton?
Yes. Uh, I believe Ormond Beach has been a wholesome place. We've had this, and I believe this prohibition government overreach, though I will not be supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
No.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Ma, Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 10B.
Ordinance Number 2021-33. An ordinance amending Section 22-23, minimum meter rates generally, 22-24, multiple minimum charges, and 22-71, service charge established of Chapter 22, Water and Sewers, the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, by increasing the minimum water and sewer rates, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance Number 2021-33, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. And I'll ask Finance Director Kelly McGuire to speak on this item.
So, the rate that you have before you is consistent with what we discussed at the workshop, at the budget workshop. Um, the rate for water is 1.8% increase for next fiscal year, and then, we also have a rate increase for the following fiscal year of 3.5%. Those two rates that we're proposing for next year and the following fiscal year should be sufficient to cover all of our water sewer needs, including operating and capital costs.
Good deal. If you would, just be available for questions, Kelly. I have one card. Colin McManus.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Partington, Commissioner Selby, Kent, Persis, and Attorney Randall Hayes. My simple question to the commission is, on Item 180, 136, requiring that before local government water or sewer utility increases any rate, charge, or fee for water or sewer utility service, the utility should provide notice. And, ending, how are we, the citizens of Ormond Beach, to interpret the word "considered" on this notice that we recently received? And also, to finish, uh, what is considered, and this is going to be carried on, on the 22nd of this month? And that is my question to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards. I just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of ordinance Number 2021-33.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on this, and, um, the reason is, um, and I, 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 maybe I need to, I probably have a question for, uh, Ms. McGuire, uh, because she stated it tonight, and it's also in the write-up, that the incremental rate adjustments provided, provide the necessary financial resources to make critical improvements to the city's water and sewer systems, pipes, pumps, treatment, et cetera, to ensure the efficient and effective service delivery. But, Ms., uh, Ms. McGuire, isn't, um, aren't we taking the $4.9 million of ARPA money, American Rescue Plan money, and spending that on those critical water and sewer pipes, pumps, treatment, et cetera?
We are doing that, yes.
So, then, this rate increase doesn't actually pay all of that. We're using ARPA money to pay over half, isn't it? Because I think we had seven, seven or eight million in planned expenditures, and we're going to use $4.9 million of ARPA money, right, to pay for that?
Correct. We have $4.6 million of ARPA money for approximately seven and a half million in water sewer projects.
Okay. So, the rate, this rate really isn't paying all of those costs?
No, the rate is not paying all of the cost for the capital.
Right, okay. And, so, I just wanted to clarify that. But, the, um, uh, and the reason that that, the reason that bothers me is, we're getting $4.9 million of federal money under the American Rescue Plan, okay? And that's really a windfall to Ormond Beach. Um, it's coming to us, you know, it's, it's our money. I mean, it's, we're going to, you know, we as taxpayers are going to pay that money to the federal government. They're basically just advancing it to us now, to the city now, and to every other city in the country, and every county in the country, and the states, I assume, also. And, um, but I see that as a, as a real windfall to our community, and... And, but I see that as a, as a real windfall to our community and I believe that we should use that money instead of paying what I would call sort of ordinary and customary improvements and maintenance to our system, that we should use that for something extraordinary, for something, I think it was Commissioner Littleton who called it generational, something that's generational. We talked earlier about the, the 1.47 million gallons of reclaimed water that we pumped, the 530 million gallons of reclaimed water that we pumped into the Halifax River last year, we pumped in last year. And the reason really in my mind is storage. We don't have sufficient storage because for anybody who's lived here for any length of time, we have roughly six months of dry time and six months, six months of rainy time. Well, there's very little demand for reclaimed water in the rainy season and there's, we can't satisfy all the demand in the dry season. So if we could store, and yet our, our output, our effluent of reclaimed water is pretty constant year round because water and sewer consumption is pretty constant year round, okay? So there's a proposal later we'll be talking about to build another above-ground storage tank which will be, I'm guessing it'll be somewhere between a million and 2 million gallons. And it'll probably cost, I don't know, the last tank we built cost about $2 a gallon. I think we built about a million gallon tank and, I don't know the exact numbers, it was about $2 a gallon. We're going to build a million and a half gallon tank. That'll, that'll cover one day's worth of effluent, one day of reclaimed water, one and a half million gallons. So it doesn't, it doesn't even come close to fixing the problem, okay? There's another proposal to, to build a second pipe under the river. We, the effluent goes to the beachside, you know, comes from the sewer plant out on Willmet. It was underneath the river to build a second pipe so that we can get them more effluent. Well, the problem is in the, in the high demand season, we run out of water as it is. We, all the effluent that we can get there, whether we have a one pipe, two pipes, or four pipes, is because we don't have the, the effluent, the reclaimed water stored somewhere for the times when we need it. So I, I'm proposing that we not adopt this rate. I actually want to adopt a higher rate. The staff has recommended a 1.8% rate. That'll save the average water customer 98 cents per month for one year, okay? If we take the 4.9 million dollars and use it to take care of some of these ordinary and customary improvements and maintenance items for our water and sewer system. I know this is, I'm really into the weeds here and I'm trying to make this as simple as possible, but I'm proposing we go to 3.5%. That would cost you an extra 98 cents per month for the average person, the average customer on your water and sewer. And for that, it would free up the 4.9 million dollars to go do something generational. One of the thing, one of the other things staff said was, well, you know, we don't have any projects and we're not sure we can, we can get that, that ARPA money. We have time limits on it. It has to be committed within a certain timeframe and then the money has to actually be spent within a certain timeframe. But you know what that timeframe is? The commitment is the money has to be committed by December 31st of 2024. That's three years and three months from right now. Has to be committed. We have two more years, so 2026, December 31st of 2026 before the money has to be spent. So we have five years to spend the money. I'm thinking that our staff can, with our consultants, can find projects, can find a project, can, can get us moving towards the goal which Senate Bill 64, the city manager mentioned that earlier, we're going to have a workshop on that. Senate Bill 64 passed in this last session is requiring the city, every city in the, in the state to discontinue within 10 years pumping any effluent into surface water, okay? So we have to start on this. We, before the end of this year, we have to have a plan. And here's this golden, this golden egg coming from the federal government, 4.9 million. And what it's going to cost you all in order to free that money up to begin that process? I'm not saying that's going to fix the whole problem. It won't, but it'll sure get us a crackerjack start on it, is it'll cost you the average water and sewer customer 98 additional cents for one year. So less than 12 bucks. And I think the average Ormond Beach resident, if they actually knew that we're pumping a half a billion gallons of reclaimed water effluent into the river, we did that last year, and they, and you said, hey, for under 12 bucks, are you in on, you know, at least getting us started, discontinuing doing that? I think the average resident says yes. Nobody wants to pay more for any service. I'm the first one that doesn't want to pay more for any service than anybody else. But the reality is that the customers, and we even say it in our own write-up, that the water and sewer, just for anybody who doesn't know, we don't make money. The city doesn't make money on water and sewer. It is what's called an enterprise fund. So all of the money that it brings in, all of the revenue that it generates has, it stays within that fund. It can only be used for water and sewer, period. None of it can flow over into the general fund to help pay for police or fire or the operation of city hall or anything else. It can only stay in there and it's the responsibility of the users of that fund, of those services, water and sewer, to pay all of the costs, including the maintenance and the repair and the operation and the upgrade of all of those facilities associated with it. So I'm going to vote no on this. I'm hoping that at least two others will agree with me and then we will, I guess it will then require a, a change in the rate and a motion to use the 4.9 million of ARPA money for a, a generational type project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see Commissioner Littleton had his hand up. I thought he started snoring there for a second during your comments, but it looks like he's awakened with us now. Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not feel these new rates are proper forward, so I will not supporting the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
He's not supporting the motion.
Yes.
Our Commissioner Kent.
Yes. Mayor, I think you and I were on the commission about two years when we ran into a problem with water in the city of Ormond Beach. You remember that?
I do.
And the prior commissions that sat before us, I believe, went over 10 years without a rate increase and there were epic failures. And we had to notify all of the residents that were affected. We had to notify the state. Am I remembering right, were we given out bottled water then for that, Mr. Mayor? Do you remember that? Was that, was that for that event?
It may have been, I'm not 100% sure.
I'm not 100% sure either.
That was before Joyce's time.
It was before Ms. Shanahan was here, but I can tell you that I sat up here and promised my constituents never again on my watch, ever would I let that happen, ever. Our rates are historically the lowest or second lowest out of all municipalities in Volusia County. I'm, I'm somewhat confused by Commissioner Selby's comments and I'm sure he'll get another bite at the apple to help explain it to me. I don't understand the, we shouldn't be putting this water into the river. You're going to, we're going to build another reuse tank for 1.5 million. That will do nothing. I'm thinking, well, it'll do something. It's how you eat an elephant, is one bite at a time. So I, I don't understand that. You don't have to clarify, you can if you want, but I just, I didn't understand it. I thought you wanted more reused storage, but then you talked against reused storage and that's, that's okay. I just, I just don't understand it. I will be voting for this tonight because as long as I'm sitting up in this chair, I teach my son all the time, say what you mean and mean what you say. And I said I would never let that happen on my watch again and I never will.
Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yeah, I just, I think most citizens realize that costs go up every year, you know, all kinds of costs and in order to keep up with that, it's, it's a better financial decision to raise taxes just till maybe a little bit each time we do it rather than have some kind of double-digit tax increase that would really set people, you know, on edge and really people would be so disappointed with that. Like that's what we do with our impact fees also. We, we just raise them a little bit. So I think it's, so I will be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may. Commissioner Kent, thank you for your comment. There's three kinds of storage. There's above ground, which are tanks. There's surface storage, which is what Port Orange uses, uses a lake, and then there's below ground storage also, okay? Which is a little more controversial and, but is widely being used. So if we're pumping 1.5 million gallons on average a day and we're going to build one tank that'll probably have between a million and 2 million gallons worth of storage capacity, we would only need 364 more of those tanks in order to cover the five, the 500 million gallons, maybe not quite that many because during some of the months we're using that, but we would probably need, I don't know, a couple hundred of them, of those tanks in order to store the reclaim that's produced every day during the rainy season. I think this is in part why the manager has requested that we have a workshop on SB 64 so that all of us, and I don't pretend to be, I'm not an engineer and I don't pretend to be an expert on this, but I've spent a lot of time studying this, you know, over the last couple of years.
Mayor. Yeah, thank you. And, and I'm assuming, you know, the reason it's controversial for the underground storage is, yeah, I live at 130 Magnolia Drive on the beachside. I live on a sand dune. You have to go up my driveway and I, I have a well that I don't, I don't use anymore because I actually use the reused water that we're talking about. But I have a well before I had reused, before beachside had reused and it was a drought we were having and I said, I wonder how much water is in that well? And I tied a, a weight to a string and drip, dropped it in, seven feet down, seven feet, I hit water and I already mentioned, you have to go up my driveway. So from where I was on the top, seven feet. So I can understand why it would be controversial to put reused water into the aquifer. That, to me, that would be even worse than putting it in the Halifax. You know, the Halifax, all water leads to the ocean, you know, at some point, but it'd be worse to put it into the aquifer that we're actually pumping water out of for your drinking water. So in, in a perfect world, that 1.5 million gallon tank that we have, because Ms. Shanahan so eloquently stated earlier that could be six months out of the year, we don't put anything into the Halifax because it's dry. And actually we have our residents really upset about, I'm paying for reused water, but where's my reuse? We say we don't have it. It's high demand. What do you mean you don't have it? I'm paying for it. And then when we get rain like we got today, you know, the tanks are, are full and people aren't using the reuse because, you know, they're good stewards of the water. They won't turn on the reuse when it's raining because it's wasteful. But I think the 1.5 gallon tank is a start. It's something, okay? And it will provide more storage and that's, that's a good thing. But I think we definitely, I'm glad we're going to have that workshop so we can look at surface level retention with it. And I think that's probably where we're going to end up going, probably something similar to what Port Orange did, you know? We don't have to, to reinvent the wheel and, you know, find a, find a piece of property that's big enough that can handle our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think the, I'm shocked when you realize that we pay $40 less on our water bill than some, at least one city in this area charges for their water bill and then substantially less than a lot of other cities. You really keep a tight rein on that and as far as the ARPA money goes, I think it was the smartest decision for this commission to use those funds for water from an accounting perspective, from a justification perspective to every citizen in Ormond Beach as far as what the fairest choice was for that. And then looking across the state at other commissions, councils that are grappling with those ARPA fund questions, they've spent hours and hours and hours in heated contentious battle debates over what to spend that money on and we avoided all that because our staff made a brilliant recommendation that was very fair to our residents. And so I think this is the best decision for where we're at right now. Certainly all the other issues can be looked at in the future, future workshops and in next year's budget. SB 64 strikes me as an unfunded mandate without a lot of direction, which is shocking, you know, coming from the Florida legislature that they would say, you need to do multiple millions of dollars of, of projects. We're not giving you any money for it and you got to do it by 2030. It's absurd. And so I think they're going to get a lukewarm response from the 360-some cities in this state unless they're going to cough up some, some big money to actually start moving those projects forward. So I don't believe there's any other questions. I'll ask Wendy to call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
No.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and move to 11A.
Ordinance number 2021-34, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Solid Waste, Yard Waste, and Recyclables, Section 10-16 Fees for Collection and Disposal Established of the Code of Ordinances by increasing fees for the collection and disposal of solid waste, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2021-34 read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. And before I forget, Mr. McManus, I, I heard your questions. I think the appropriate place to start is either with Kelly McGuire or Chris Bile. Hopefully they can give you a card and then if you need to go further than that, they can explain in detail the, the entire process. So I didn't want to let that get by. Yes, sir. 11A, I don't have any cards. I just need a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Yep. Well, I'll score that as-
Give it to Littleton.
Littleton making the motion and Commissioner Kent with the second. Any discussion on 11A? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And 12A.
12A is a discussion item. It's the 2022 City of Ormond Beach Legislative Action Agenda.
I don't have any cards and city manager Shanahan, did you want to?
Just briefly, Brian is here and he'll walk you through the process. We need some direction from you. The legislative delegation meets in, I think it's October 6th, it's that Wednesday or Friday in October, that first week. So we need to present our legislative priorities to them and so we need some direction from you. What we'll do is once we hear from you tonight, then we'll prepare our brochure with our legislative priorities, both policy initiatives and funding projects and we'll bring that back to you at your next meeting for consideration. And so Brian Rodamacher, economic development director, will bring that forward.
Thank you. Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. In considering a legislative action agenda for this upcoming session, the city took cues from the state level as well as our own city budget. In the past year, the Florida budget has prioritized funding- city budget. In the past year, the Florida budget has prioritized funding to protect the environment, improve water quality and conservation, and improve resiliency. And we continue to believe that is a priority that they will bring into their 2022, 2023, or the next upcoming legislative session. In the most recent session, as you'll see on this slide here, six projects in, in Volusia County received appropriations. Two of them were water projects in South Daytona and in Deltona. And all of these projects consisted of a, of a local match that the state legislature is supporting. As indicated in, in the proposed budget for this fiscal year, a goal of the city is to maintain our environmental stewardship by reducing the negative impacts of pollutants to water bodies and providing clean water to our residents and visitors. And we also want to maintain our public policies that we have had over the past couple of years related to supporting and advocating for transportation, economic development, and for home rule. So as we look into the, the next session, we'll, we'll advocate for these priorities and these policies with our delegates and with the legislature. And then in terms of looking at legislative funding, the, the city has identified four shovel-ready projects that are focused on water quality and conservation that we would, would like to have consideration for funding. And just briefly, the, the four that we've identified are UV disinfection, which is a water quality project, the reclaimed water projects, which are the two conservation projects that are the, that would increase capacity and redundancy for both Beachside and the city's Western Service territory, the Hudson Well Field, which is another water quality and conservation project to increase our production capacity and redundancy, and then finally, septic tank conversion of Magnolia and Oak Drive in Bonita, which is a water quality project, which would convert 66, 76 residents to, from septic to sewer. And this, just as a note, this project would be pursued if there was sufficient resident interest as demonstrated. And then the city would also commit to trying to find additional state or federal resources to reduce the burden to its, to our residents. Again, we're seeking direction on these items and any additional items the commission may wish to discuss. But as on this slide, we identify this is our process and timeline. As City Manager Shanahan identified, once we get the seal of approval, we'll bring those priorities to the Volusia delegation that's coming on October 6th. We'll spend October through December, meeting with our delegates, talking to them about our priorities. And then when session commences in January, we'll continue to advocate with our legislative lobbyists to make sure that Ormond Beach priorities are well addressed and hopefully funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And, Commission, any additions or deletions to that list?
I thought the list was great. I personally liked it. I, I'm very happy with it.
Yeah, I have some questions. How much does each project cost? What, what will our match be? And where would that money come from? I mean, you said, Brian, you said that, you know, that projects that got funded in the past all had matches, you know, that, once again, I'm back to the $4.9 million of ARPA money. We had $4.9 million going up to the state legislature and saying, hey, we got some great projects, and here's what we're prepared to put out there for these projects. I think they'd be all over it. I think we'd get a, a whole bunch of projects funded. But anyway, how much does each of these cost? And how much match do we have?
You can see the cost there on the slide for those projects.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the write-up.
So what we would do is, we would break these projects down into component parts and pieces. You would do your design and engineering first, and then move forward to construction. There are no funds budgeted this year, but these, we would not get that funding until the end of the fiscal year in 2022. So we wouldn't get the funding until July, but we would know that we'd had funding, and we could program that into the budget for that upcoming year, if you were going to get funding for that.
And once again, have an adequate reserves gives us the opportunity to participate in some of these things. Commissioner Kent.
And that is exactly what I was going to say. So you went ahead and stole some of my thunder, but that's why, and one of the reasons why, I voted for our tax rate this evening. And this way, we have money above our 15% threshold that we set, and we're a coastal community that we've got to deal with, with hurricanes. But now we have money there that we can use if we're fortunate enough to get some support on these projects. Thanks.
And I was good, I was good with this list as well. I think it hits on a lot of the, the correct points. The one thing about the septic tank conversion, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on, I heard Commissioner Selby mention at a, a meeting or two back that Commissioner Kent and I had supported the Magnolia, Oak, and Bonita Avenue septic tank conversion. And I'll let Commissioner Kent address it if he feels like he needs to, but I wanted to make it clear that I supported doing Ormond Beach first if we were going to do any septic tank conversion. I thought that this was, 76 residents was the right size for us to prove that we could do this the right way and show other residents in our area, I'll say, that we can do this successfully, and people will be pleased with it. But I want to be very transparent with it, with those Fiesta Heights residents and those Magnolia and Oak Drive residents. I want them to understand, this is going to cost them likely between $5,000 and $15,000 each for their property. And then they'll have to pay an additional $600 or so dollars a year, somewhere between 300 or 400 to 600 a year in sewer fees, once they're connected to our sewer. Those are costs that they don't have right now. And so I think it's important that they know that going into it, they're aware of it, and they buy into doing that because it's the right thing to do for the environment. But I just wanted to, to correct the record, be very clear, have a detailed, transparent, informative, and collaborative process for our residents, explaining what it is that we're proposing and what the costs are. Because honestly, the folks in Fiesta Heights, this is Commissioner Littleton's zone, and the folks on Oak and Magnolia may have no idea at this point that this is something that's going to be proposed for them. And that's a big hit, $15,000. Obviously, we would try to get as much grant money as possible to reduce that amount, but the one thing that they would not escape, which every other Ormond Beach resident that's already on sewer pays, is that sewer fee, which is usually equal to what your water, water fee is. So I just want to make that very clear and be transparent about that. And I think those residents, whether we send them a letter or how we start that process, I don't know. But we need to let them know what may be coming and then hear from them as well.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the reason this project was of particular interest and convenience is because it's adjacent to the lift station that's already there. So you would not have to build a lift station, which will help decrease the cost. But certainly, the idea is that staff would not recommend proceeding with this until we had a community meeting and were able to determine if there was any interest in moving forward. And we would work to get as much grant money as possible. And that's some of the things that were funded last year by the legislature to help bring those sewer lines to some payments so they didn't have a fee for, for that cost. So it's a, perhaps a more manageable project, but the idea was it's adjacency to an existing lift station, and we would not have to build that, so that helps decrease the cost somewhat.
Makes it much more affordable. Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, and Mayor, I'll just say, I, I have some family members that moved up to the North Peninsula not too long ago. And for those that think a septic tank is just free, there's major issues that happen with a septic tank. And when you have to put in a new drain field and a new septic tank, and every year or every two years, you have to get it pumped out, I mean, those are fees as well. And most people that I speak to would much rather pay the $300 to $600 a year fee for adding sewer and having that reliability instead of the mess that some of them have to deal with.
That's great to hear. And I think that should be part of the educational campaign as well. Also, as the state tightens down with DEP on their restrictions on septic tanks, servicing, maintaining, repairing, and inspections with fees and things of that nature, it's going to become more cost-effective for people to come on to the sewer system. It's almost going to force them to do it, if you will. And so, looking at what hap, what's happening in DeBery with the springs, protected waterways that the state's requiring, that should be part of the education and conversation with these folks. I just, I want to avoid the whole debacle we had with a previous push to do septic to sewer that just turned into a disastrous nightmare by getting ahead of it and educate. We owe that to our residents. Maybe we didn't owe that to the people that live north of us that aren't in our city, although I think we did. But we certainly owe it to our residents to do it the right way and, and be forthright and explain everything and let them understand, we're working as hard as we can to make it as affordable as possible for them. Commissioner Littleton, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, Mayor. You and Joyce pretty much covered the septic tank conversion in Zone 4. I appreciate this project and appreciate the rest of the list also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you need a motion on that, or is that just?
I have heard affirmative action from four of you, so we'll proceed with that list and bring that back to you.
Great. Thank you, Joyce. And we'll move to reports, suggestions, and requests, and start with City Manager Shanahan.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, I don't have anything further. I think we covered the workshops and the Legislative Action Agenda. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one thing. I forgot. I'm so sorry. Two items. We have recently promoted Alex Schuman as our city engineer, and Mr. Schuman is here tonight.
Right. Congratulations.
We're really excited about that. And also here tonight is a visitor, is Susan Daughters. Did I say her last name yet? Susan is our new city clerk. She lives in the Ormond Beach area, and she'll be starting sometime near the end of the month. But she wanted to come tonight and observe so she could understand who was who. And so we appreciate her forthrightness and for coming here and, and taking the initiative to kind of learn a little bit about what we do here. So welcome, Susan.
Welcome, Susan. This is not our normal configuration, by the way, just so you know. We'll be back hopefully soon. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
No further comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
None down here unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Persis.
Good evening, everyone. Have a couple of items I'd like just to share with you. One thing we have that the city is doing right now, which I'm very excited about, is speed calming tables are being installed on Hernandez and Fleming Avenues to make our streets safer. And I just thought that was just a great idea. I know those residents wanted that, and we listened, and, and that's happening. So I think that's great. I'd like to welcome Alex and Susan. Thank you for being here. You're in a great city with, with all of us, and we're, we're looking forward to getting to know you and work with you. Also, I want to just thank Joyce Shanahan, our city manager, for the status report tonight of, you know, of city activities. It was thorough. It was done so well. I was very impressed with it. Just wanted to, you know, let you know that I appreciate your hard work with that. And I'm very excited about the OB Life 2021. I think that's going to be great for our residents in the Western Service area. And let's see, Starbucks on Granada, that's right by Dr. Salzberg's office, is going to open this Friday. So those of you that are coffee lovers, hit that Starbucks, because they're going to be open on Friday. And a couple of weeks ago, we, the chief, chief severs let us all ride in a brand-new fire truck. It was absolutely fantastic. The mayor was in the front seat. The mayor got to pull the horn, I think, a couple of times. And it was just a really fun afternoon. And the new fire trucks are absolutely top of the line. They're just amazing. And so they're, and we're all, I'm very excited about the pushing ceremony. I think we're all going to that tomorrow, too. That's going to be great at Station 92. Let's see. And I think that's everything that I have to say. I hope everyone has a great evening, and please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Commissioner Littleton.
I would like to thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to attend the meeting via Zoom. And I hope to be with you all at next meeting in person. And thank you.
Great. Thank you. Yep, we're looking forward to having you back. Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, well, first of all, just Alex, congratulations on your promotion, and Susan, welcome. You know, I, I don't know why anybody would want to be a city clerk. That seems like a totally impossible job. You got to keep track of absolutely everything forever. I don't, you know, but God bless you. I'm glad you're willing and able and can do it and want to do it. I just have one quick announcement. Giulio Truglio mentioned it earlier, but this weekend, of course, is the Celtic Festival in, in the Casements, Rockefeller Gardens. And on Saturday at noon time, if you can make it, will be the tribute to the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attack. And it should be a pretty memorable experience. So if you can participate in that, that'd be great. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. Alex, congratulations. Go celebrate. Susan, welcome, welcome aboard. We're glad you're here, and I think you should go celebrate as well. Just, just a, a couple of things. I too appreciate the commission allowing me to participate three weeks ago at that commission meeting. I, I was a pretty sick boy. And I just want to, I want to thank a couple of people here. I want to thank Joyce Shanahan and Randy Hayes and Deputy Mayor Persis for reaching out to me and just checking on me. I appreciate it more than you know. And it's good to be back. And to Ike Leary, thank you for, for checking on me. And to Travis Sargent, thank you. And Everett, happy early birthday. And you should get, and it's on the public record, something very special from your father for sitting here for almost two hours on your last day of being five. Yeah. And actually, Ike and Travis, my favorite thing about both of you is that you're good dads. Have a good night.
Thank you. And I just wanted to touch on a couple budget items. I think the increase, as I stated before, was 4.7%. Inflation right now is at 4.3%. And so hopefully, this increase will, will cover the inflation. It's possible inflation could go higher, so it's not a guarantee that it will. As far as our reserves go, some cities have between $40 and $60 million in reserves, particularly coastal cities. And I look at a city like North Lauderdale down in South Florida, similar size to Ormond Beach, they've got 44,000 people, or probably 42, 43,000. They have $27.3 million in reserves because they learned the hard way during some previous hurricanes that they did not have enough. So they've got three times the amount of reserves that our city has. And there are other cities down there, Lantana, a little city of 11,695 people, they've got $10 million in reserves. That's a, a million more than what we have. And then Weston, they're a bigger city, probably closer to the size of Port Orange. They've got $55 million in reserves. So that 15% reserve amount that's in our policy, that is the floor. That is like a do not go below level. There's no reason we shouldn't have a 25 or 30% reserve to protect our residents. I'm very, very proud that we have what we have, and I wouldn't be bothered if it went a little higher because protecting our residents, I think, is our, our biggest responsibility up here. Those debris removal contracts on tonight's agenda, part of the reason we're able to get those is because those companies know that we're a fiscally responsible city and we have the reserves to pay. And that's, that's important. Budgeting 101, never use one-time money one-time money to pay for recurring expenses. And so when Mr. Hanush spoke tonight, I thought he must have never taken budgeting 101. Never use one-time money to pay for recurring expenses. I mean, that's just as basic as it gets. And I look at the recommendation of our budget advisory board. It was four to one. The only person who voted against it, I believe, was Joe Hanush. But we have, it's not a, it's not totally made up of novices on that board. We have some very serious financial and accounting experience, multiple, multiple years. And those folks recommended this budget. So I was proud to support it. Those are our residents who care about our city, not to mention, we have an award-winning and very fiscally conservative staff. So the budget, even though it is going up a little bit to match inflation, uh, I think it's still extremely fiscally responsible. And, and even with that little increase, we're still, as we always are, second lowest millage next to DeBury. I don't think we're ever gonna defeat DeBury unless we can convince FPL to move here. Um, that'd be the only way, only way we'd ever be able to do it. So, um, those are the only comments I wanted to make about the budget. Nobody likes increases, but when you have a fiscal responsibility to protect your city, don't play political games with the budget. Do what is right for your residents and fund your priorities. We learned that from Mayor Costella. I think it was a 21% increase one year after eight or nine years of no increases. And that was using a lot of one-time dollars to, uh, fund recurring expenses. Terrible idea and not good for our city.
Mayor, we got hit, if you don't mind. We got hit with a double-digit tax increase line-out-the-door residents and double-digit water sewer rate increase because we had to do what was right. It, because there was a prior commission that went over 10 years because, in my opinion, they were playing political games. Look how great I am. I don't raise your taxes. However, we can't give you water. We've got a major problem. And, Mayor, I'm not gonna steal your thunder. This is your time.
Nope. That's, that was basically my point. I mean, uh, it's just frustrating. I know there's a group out there where, uh, it's red meat, politics, to say, no tax increase, but it's bad budgeting and it creates problems after problems after problems down the road. So, uh, with that, I think I've said enough, and we'll be adjourned. Thank you all. Everett?